All right, we will bring the meeting to order. Start the pledge.
Pledge to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God and indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I think with Craig being on, I'm gonna try to help you manage this a little bit. So we will seek approval for the consent agenda.
So I have a question on that. So I know when we talked about this concrete, we had the eighteen thousand dollar bill and something go wrong?
Hey, hold on just a second, guys. You're in the tax rate hearing, which is at six o'clock. So we have to do like fifteen minutes. I added these items on your agenda so we could get them cleaned up, because we've done that on occasion. So we're in tax rate hearings, so I'm gonna go to Matt Delio, show you that information. And usually we wait fifteen minutes to anybody who would want to come in and have any comment about that. So for our new board members, Matt is our municipal advisor, and I'm going to... Oh, Matt, I gotta get ahold of him. He is talking to my phone. I got Craig on my phone, so how am I gonna call him and tell him to go get him on? Amy? Need you dial a number or text?
Can you text him?
Text him. I was gonna text him from my phone. I think I can do that.
You can still text.
I can do both. Text him. That's okay, we got it. Just text him. He's already up on Google. There he is. Matt, can you hear us?
I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yep, we got you on the stereo.
All right.
So Matt's just gonna give us some overview of our tax levy and kind of what's happening with our assessed valuation and how that affects our rate. And so he'll give us some information, and I'll chime in when necessary. Matt, it's you. You're with the board, and they can all see your big giant head on the screen.
All right. All right. Hello, everyone. Just kind of a rundown of the tax rate very quickly. Every year, we go through this process. We submit all the information we get from the county to the state auditor's office. There's a formula that the tax rate goes through every year. It is as two things that it's trying to accomplish. A, it's trying to make sure schools remain revenue neutral, so they have the funds to operate their school. And B, it's also trying to make sure that schools do not receive a windfall. So, for example, last year, two years ago, a lot of schools were seeing the effects of COVID and the increase in housing values and the increase of car buying and the appreciation of used cars. And so when we went through the formula, many districts were limited to the type of increase that they could have because of that. And many had to roll back their levies in order to stay within those parameters. So in your situation this year, what the formula takes a look at is what the assessed value was for last year, and it's only looking at, you know, the same value for last year, the same properties, I should say, for last year. So that house on Smith Street, what was it valued at last year and what is it valued at this year? And so the total assessed value for last year was fifty-nine million, five forty-six, eight seventy-two. This year, that same property is valued at fifty-eight million, eight oh five, nine oh two. So there's a difference there of, you know, somewhere around seven hundred thousand dollars over this year than last year. So when you run that through the formula, the levy will increase since there's a seven hundred thousand dollar decrease, so the funds remain revenue neutral. And, for example, on the tax rate notice, it shows new revenue from reassessment being negative thirteen dollars. And that's with the increase of the levy going up to two dollars and ninety-six cents versus the levy from last year of two ninety-three. So in order to remain revenue neutral, you're seeing that increase. Total assessed value this year is gonna come in at fifty-nine million, eight. There's about a million dollars in new assessments, new construction, that type of stuff that has never been taxed before on the books. And so that'll generate about thirty thousand dollars in new revenue. So that's kind of what you're looking at from a top-down view of the formula and your assessments and how it has affected your levy.
Any questions from the board or anything you guys wanna know more about? You got Matt here?
Pleasure.
Thank you.
No, I was just trying to follow the numbers on the 2024, because we had fifty-nine, eight forty-two. I thought he said something different, so I may have just looked at that incorrectly.
Matt, so you're looking at total AV?
Yeah.
On our notice, that's gonna be the tax year. That includes the new construction, doesn't it?
It does. Yeah, it's total AV, correct.
So you've got new construction was almost a million?
A million, right.
Yeah. So that's why you're seeing that. Our AV actually went down based on the old stuff that was always around. Our assessed valuation's gone down. But because we had some new construction, it looks like the same number almost. So that actually helped us. But it also highlights the importance, I don't know, Matt, you might wanna chime in on this, the importance of our assessors going out and doing accurate assessments and keeping up with those, because if they don't, well, then we can see things like this. Matt, did you have an opinion or anything on that?
I mean, it's definitely a mixed bag throughout the state, what we see. I've seen five and seven percent growth in personal property in counties. And, for example, you guys are in Morgan, down six percent in personal property and down almost six percent in Montauk. So it varies county by county, what some of the things we're seeing, and they are elected officials, I have to say.
Yeah, and that's why I'm pointing it out to you, is that it's important, you know, that these assessments come back accurately. And sometimes Matt and I kind of discuss this. It's difficult to understand all the figures into the whole. But I would give you this analogy, I don't know if it's the best one, but you had a church with a hundred people in it. And you have your church, and you say, hey, we need to tie some offerings to pay the electric bill, pay the pastor, make sure the lights stay on, buy the communion for Sunday, all those bills. You have a hundred people in the church, and the pastor goes up and says, hey, we need this much to make this happen. Help us support the church. And then a hundred people are there, and all of a sudden twenty people drop off. You're asking then eighty people to help pay for the same bills the church has, and the bills have gone up. In this way, we have less value, we're asking for more or less money that we can tax. Does that make sense? Less to draw from. So if the assessed valuation, Matt, make sure I'm right on this now. If it would go up to sixty, seventy million, we wouldn't necessarily have to tax as much, because we'd have more property to pull from, the rate would be lower. Or could be.
Yes, and this is, you know, painting with a broad brush, but you can think of it as a teeter totter. So what the formula is saying, the taxpayers in the middle of the teeter totter. And so their tax bill, their assessment, goes down on one side. The levy goes up on the other side, but the rate or the check that they're writing to the county is still the same, because, you know, one's offsetting the other. As you can see, you know, on that notice, it's a negative thirteen dollars. Now, you know, again, that's averaging over the county. Not everybody's going to have the same average, obviously.
So when we're talking about assessed valuation, we're talking about a combination of real estate and personal property?
Correct.
And our tax rate is based on the estimated, well, the 2024 tax year, Craig?
Yes.
Can you walk us through the numbers again? Because I'm seeing an increase when I do the math. I'm confused with what we're talking about here. I'm seeing a fifty-nine, eight forty, two forty-two for this year, and the prior year fifty-nine, five forty-six, eight seventy-two, which is an increase.
Yeah.
So that's where I'm a little bit confused.
No, you're one hundred percent correct. What the formula looks at is, remember, they're comparing last year's assessments to this year's assessments. So that fifty-nine million, eight forty, two forty-two number that you're looking at includes a million dollars, a little over a million dollars in new construction, new assessments that have never been taxed before. So the formula deducts those items, so it can compare last year's assessments to this year's assessments apples to apples. So that's why you see a difference in the dollar amount.
And that million dollars, that's all just kind of an estimate as well, essentially, of new construction?
No.
No?
We're getting back from the three county assessors that handed that to us.
Okay.
So we did have some things built. Does that make sense? Any other questions for Matt? Craig, any questions?
No.
And this is the maximum level of operating levy that we can do, is that correct, Matt?
That's correct. Yeah. The, I don't know if they've seen the forms or anyone has happened to look at the forms. There's a maximum levy on your forms of three dollars and fifty cents. The only way that you can get to that number is through this formula. Like, you know, last year being two ninety-three, this year being two ninety-six. It's just that process that can get you to the three dollars and fifty cent max. That's not something the board can say, you know, we want to give teachers raises, so we wanna bump our levy up to, you know, three and a quarter or to the max of three fifty. It's just a formula process.
Yeah, I think everybody understands the only way we can get any kind of a levy increase for operating is what we did back last April, which did not pass, to have a voter-approved levy increase for operating or for teacher salaries or something like that. All right, Matt, thanks for the help with the bond language, appreciate you. And if there's no other questions, I will cut him loose and let him go back.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Let me know if you have any questions.
All right.
I believe that we have a fifteen-minute break, not break, but a period that we wait, which has just run.
You did it.
So we are through that period.
You ran out of fifteen minutes, and you don't have any.
Yeah. So I think that we're kind of now back into the consent agenda. You had a question?
Yeah, so when we first talked about the concrete, we were given that first bill that was for like eighteen thousand dollars. And now I see this second bill. Did, I mean, was there a reason for the second bill?
Craig has that information. You there?
There's a second invoice that like, I don't have it directly in front of me, seventy-three hundred maybe, somewhere in that neighborhood. As I was up there looking over the price, there's another forty-one by fourteen section that when they went to hammer out with the hammer, was gonna go to the wayside. So luckily Bo had his daughter up there shooting baskets. Luckily, he came out, tested, hey, what do you wanna do here? He said, if well, it's my opinion, if we're gonna fix it, let's fix it. So we made the executive decision to tear out another forty-one by fourteen and carry on with what needed to be done.
About six hundred square feet. Where the area that was gonna be repaired, it was, there was all these other repairs that needed to be like adjacent to it.
Gotcha. That's in the circle drive?
Yeah, it was in the circle drive. And then, you know, he had the, is it Bryce?
Yeah.
They were up there getting ready to kind of get the whole ones.
I just confused because we just...
That works.
You know, anytime you get into remodeling, it's probably something, the facilities plan is, you know, obviously, the school district can't afford to just redo the whole circle drive in one shot. So if you do it in thirds, or maybe one year you get lucky and do it in halves or whatever, would be great. But, I mean, you can't continuously put a Band-Aid on everything. So I think there's some, you know, whenever, when Terry asked everybody, when Dr. Robb asked everybody about like the facilities plan, I think everybody needs to take a long hard look and see what needs to be done. It's just not the building. Okay, we got, you know, we got an issue over in between us and St. Andrews that needs to be fixed. We've got an issue between us and St. Andrews and the city that needs to be fixed. And luckily, David went and talked to the city. And so at some point, we're gonna have to address these situations. And whenever you address them, I mean, it's always gonna cost money. No matter what you do, it's always gonna cost money. And the longer you let it go, the more it's gonna cost. So at least just food for thought that, you know, I know everybody drives around town, makes the family on a walk or a bike ride, you know, cruise by the school. You might see something that I don't see, that Dr. Robb didn't see, that Bo didn't see, that the community didn't see.
I saw one reason why that is so bad right there, where that cobra pipe that you and I discussed that one day, why it is breaking off and the asphalt's breaking up so bad. There was a garbage truck came out of that, and he turned and ran off through part of that. So, I mean, they're just unintentionally making it a lot worse until we get... And the city has agreed that they will do the approach if we do the sidewalk. And whether we need, whether we need to split that up with St. Andrews or...
I think that's fair, David, but I think...
I do too.
And I know I'm on speaker, and I know I'm probably being recorded, and that's fine. But I think what's fair is, you know, everybody needs to understand that that is not a public street. It's district-owned property.
I think they were assuming that we would handle the street coming between the two schools, and then they would do the approach back to the sidewalk.
But, you know, I mean, what's assumed? I mean, I think we all know what assumed is. I mean, I think we can also argue that St. Andrews assumes that we're gonna maintain that parking lot.
Yeah, that's another question.
And, you know, it's, and I understand we gotta be good neighbors, but, you know, what's some of that help me, help you?
Well, as far as, is there any other questions about the consent agenda? We just need a motion to move forward with that.
Have they said anything about, I knew it was mentioned in the last meeting about trying to fix the ramp. Was anything, I've been by there a couple weeks, did anything happen there or?
Didn't any construction ever come?
Oh, no. I did take a phone call with him, and he is gonna try to get to it. He told me to take care of it. That's the last I got, that was last week or so.
Bryce, because I kind of thought they were gonna try to do something in that bid. Yeah, I thought something on that ramp was included in the eighteen thousand.
Craig, did you, was Bryce gonna work on the ramp as well, or do you know?
Well, I told Bryce to let it go, because you told me you talked to Aaron, and Aaron was gonna address it.
Yeah, I haven't heard from him in about a week. I can give him a call back.
That needs to be sealed up around those poles, so all it's gonna do is just get drastically worse every winter, because snow and water down in there and freezing and thawing, and it's just gonna bust out the concrete, so.
Yeah.
So I think we get a hold of Aaron Moon and see what his plan of attack is, what his plan of action is, and then we'll go from there.
But did that eighteen thousand include them working on that ramp?
I can sure ask. I mean, is it what we're looking at? I mean, I don't know. I don't know what Bryce even thought to put it in. I have no idea, but you're looking at some vertical patches, about all you can do.
We, Derek and I stopped and looked at it the other day, and I don't know that vertical patches is gonna do it, because some of that broke out right where the steps go down, to walk down to the elementary.
Well, right, where you're talking about, there's nothing that can be done there, unless you wanna tear it out. Are you looking at, I don't know, I mean, Terry, Dr. Robb can look up what he charges to put it in there, but you're looking at several hundred thousand dollars. I mean, you're, maybe not a hundred thousand, but I mean, you're looking at several thousand dollars.
Well, I don't think the whole thing's gonna be tore out. I just think the upper walls that come up, I think you can cut the rails off, have a plate put on, do it the right way this time, reforge the walls, and reattach the rails by tapcons in the top of it.
No, you're still, you're still not gonna fix it. I mean, you're still gonna have a water problem.
Well, if you don't, if you're not putting, I mean, the problem that is splitting out is they put the piping in for the rails, they poured the concrete around them, and they didn't seal the top. So water got in around the piping, and just like everybody knows, it froze, it popped the edges. So what you're gonna have to do is put the walls back up and then just attach onto it, on top of it, with just tapcons or some kind of bolt down, you know, so there's no giant hole for water to set and freeze. And that'll cure the solution of it, you know, trying to crack around the pipes when there's not a hole for the water to sit in.
Well, I mean, I understand what you're saying, Derek, but the damage is already done.
Oh, I know. You're, the only way to fix it is to cut, cut them, jack the walls out, start the actual wall that the pipe's set in, not the whole ramp and everything.
Well, when you, when you take down a wall or you're taking down a ramp, it's all tied together.
Now, I haven't, I wasn't there when it was poured, so I don't know how they poured it.
But, I mean, I totally understand what you're saying, but the problem we face now is the damage is already done. And, I mean, do you, I mean, I guess, what do you do? I mean, you're back again, do you put a Band-Aid on it? Do you, do you tear it out and fix it right? I mean, I don't know. I don't know what the answer is, but I know that, what I do know is the damage is already done. That you're not, you're not just gonna be able to put a Band-Aid on it and think it's gonna fix it.
It could get pricey.
Yeah, I'll give Aaron Moon a call. Is there anything else you guys wanted me to do on that?
Um, not on that, but I don't think we ever actually saw the estimate. Like Amanda was asking about the eighteen thousand. If it, we talked about that being part of the ramp and we're paying it. So was it ever in the, because the invoice is very broad. I mean, it just says how many square feet or whatever. It doesn't say like where they worked or what they did.
I went back to June, I couldn't find it. I was trying to find it back there.
I didn't see anything.
I don't have...
Well, I was, I was like...
Craig, it's from the last meeting.
Well, I mean, I went back for just a second. Couldn't remember when it was done, so what we talked about.
I was like Craig directing and saying, oh, that it really wasn't included in the bid to repair that, because we were gonna go back on Aaron Moon and see if we could get anything done with him before we jumped in.
But I feel like the first quote that was brought to us by Craig had both sections being repaired plus some work on the ramp.
Which is why we went ahead and approved it so it could get done, of course, cool, and it was under a certain amount to prove.
Then enough problems gonna pop there.
Right.
I mean, I don't have a problem reaching out to Bryce and having a vertical patch it. But just so, just so the Board of Education, Dr. Robb, and the whole community understands, that vertical patch isn't curing the problem. It's still gonna flake off.
Hey, Craig, I think, I think what, I think what they're saying is that they, when we talked about the original bid, they were thinking that of what was quoted, some work was already done there on the ramp. So they're, they're asking about the eighteen thousand dollar, originally in great front bid, and wondering why it's still that high if they didn't do any work on the ramp. Is kind of what they're actually talking about.
Right, and I never seen from Bryce an itemized, and I think that's what Esther's getting at, an itemized, as your anonymized bill or an estimate, that I, like I said, I can reach out to Bryce and have, you know, I can say, hey, go patch it. You know, but I get your tea. I mean, it's gonna be like anybody else. He's not gonna stand behind it. It might flake off in a month. Well, I can tell you what it's gonna, when it's gonna pop. It's gonna pop when it gets cold. And that's just the, that's just the nature of mother nature.
I think...
In cold air, cold air and wind, it's gonna bust.
I don't think we're necessarily saying we want him to go and patch it. We're just wanting to see an anonymized bill to see if it was included in the original estimate.
So we'd like to see the estimate and the bill.
Yeah, I mean, that would be what I would recommend, if, you know, seeing what was...
Proposed.
Proposed first, and then compare that to what this invoice says. I don't know, do we, you don't have a copy of that, Dr. Robb? Is there a way you can get that, Craig, and get that in front of the board?
Sure, I mean, I can reach out to Bryce and say, hey, would you, you know, break it down, give me a bid? You know, itemize it out. What'd you, what'd you think your cost on... What'd you, what'd you think your cost on the ramp was gonna be? Was it a thousand, twenty-five hundred? What was it?
No, I think, I think what they're wanting to see is, um, the itemized bid originally, the one that we, we thought, before we approved, or that we approved to do just the work in general. Because I think there was an assumption made that they thought, um, the ramp was included as a part of that. So just so we can compare what he originally told us and the amount he was raising on the bills for that to what he's now building us for, for the work that he actually did.
Right. I'm okay.
Yeah.
We can put that on the next agenda. We just gotta, but I'm hearing you guys say, if you wanna know, we got these bills, was there one more thing he was supposed to do?
Are we paying?
Was that in the quote?
Cuz the way we thought is he was gonna do the work and that was included in the money that we, uh, paid him obviously.
So you went with all the payments until you know that last piece is done? Since it's not itemized, there's no way to tell.
Okay, so if I understand, uh, the way this should work and I may be wrong, um, I'm not sure, I don't believe that we would need any sort of motion on the consent agenda at all since this is the only item that's included in it. And I believe that we could probably move into.
I kept, and I kept a consent there guys, just to, cuz I thought there might be a couple more things if there's something afloat there. Make sure next weekend we push forward to get this business taken care of, so.
Okay.
All right.
And that's what we'll do. We'll move into, uh, new business and first we have the huddle agreement.
This comes up about every year and since we're kinda getting into our seasons and stuff, uh, Mr. Carver Hall forwarded this to me and had it reviewed. Reviewed it with, let me see what he wrote for you there from, uh, Coach Culpepper. And what they're proposing to do. I think this is similar to what we've done in the past, but since it's a three-year contract and it's about nine thousand dollars a year.
Ninety-nine hundred.
Yeah, expensive. Um, huddle is the system they use to analyze. It used to be, a long time ago, they used to trade tapes. So you traded videotape, somebody at coal camp, you meet them halfway and coaches are out running the roads and I guess they got mileage for that at one point. It was the old school way of scouting other teams. I'll give you a tape of my team, you give me a tape of yours and people traded tapes around. Now it's all online. It's all centralized. Uh, you can, you can watch all the plays and analyze it of another football team and know what you're going against. Probably keeps kids a little safer. Um, and our, um, our boosters are paying for, I understand, half of that. Uh, but we'd be in a three-year agreement with them.
Does this include, um, our streaming that we do through YouTube? I thought it did.
Yes.
Yes.
Which is a huge.
And does Stat Trak too.
Yeah, which is.
And there's an ability to sell digital tickets kinda like Misha does too.
Well, Misha kinda wants that.
Yeah, they require it. Yeah, it does your live streaming.
That's what I thought.
And it includes, like I said, includes the cameras and everything, so.
It does.
Cuz I think Shelley already wrote the check for this year for Booster Club.
So Booster Club pays half.
Yes.
And we pay the remaining half of the ninety-nine hundred.
A year, yes.
And then whatever football is paying for gets billed to them separately or is that included in this? That's not included in this, but that's not included in the ninety-nine?
Well, they're getting, I, I believe they're getting something a little extra that goes with football. That ramp sort of costs some little extra.
I've got a, I've got a question.
Sir?
I wanna be sure I heard Amanda correctly. And I heard Ashley, and I do, I've been on the board long enough that Booster Club has graciously paid for half. And I guess this is probably more, I just wanted to be sure I heard Amanda correctly. It's more of a question for you, Dr. Rob. So everybody's got a student activity account, correct?
Yes.
So, so out of this virtually five thousand dollars a year that's gonna cost us, is, is girls' basketball, boys' basketball, football chiming in on this too?
Not that I'm aware of, Greg.
So, so we're talking about a selected, a selected, uh, how do I word it? A selected population of our school is utilizing Huddle. Correct? Those that play football, basketball, baseball, softball.
Volleyball.
Volleyball.
So volleyball, whatever the extracurriculars is. So I mean, I think it'd be fair to say, I think these pro, these extracurriculars oughta be chiming, oughta be helping out. Is there several, I mean, I shouldn't say, our community's very gracious in, in giving. And it seems like we're always asking for donations for this and that, whatever the orgis- organization may be. But I mean, I, I think, I think it's fair to ask that these extracurriculars that are using Huddle, that, that, if that's what they want, they need to fund it.
Do we, this is kind of along the same lines, uh, but, and I'm not sure, since I'm usually there, but do we use Huddle for, for, uh, uh, like school, like music programs, graduation and all those sorts of things?
Yeah, I, I can answer for that one, yeah. So I, like, I'll watch it sometimes. Oh, I get, I, I guess I'll, I'm behind the camera. Yeah, we do. So, um, you can watch graduation, music and all those things online also. And then sometimes they'll go Facebook Live so you can see more of a in-person view and also, but, cuz that one's just a wide spread of it. It is nice, the Huddle camera, because it'll tell you the score of the thing at home also for the games and everything, which I appreciate as a, sometimes doesn't wanna go to school, to watch a game that I live like half a mile away from.
Hey Bo, or Dr. Rob, either one, is, is Jason or Mr. Carver Hall there? What's your thoughts on it?
No, they're not here tonight. Carver, Carver Hall is coaching and I think Jason might be as well.
Football practices are right back thirty, so.
I don't know.
Youth football coaching.
You don't wanna pass it tonight, guys? We can throw it on to the next agenda. I put it up here just.
Okay, what'd you think? You said it's a three-year commitment?
Yeah, it is.
We have a choice, right?
To get a lower price.
So Misha requires us to have it.
If we're gonna, if you're gonna host a postseason game, you have to have that so they can stream their game onto Misha's TV. They tap into that Huddle camera.
So it's not a lower.
So you're gonna have it to your, their game on Misha TV and Misha TV's gonna charge you ten dollars?
Yes, sir.
You're getting a locked-in price, Craig, for three years with no increase. That's one reason why.
How much did it increase from last year to this year? Do you know that?
I'd have to look that up. Actually, I don't know.
And I think, I think though, that we could probably approve, if, that you could, there could be a discussion on if you want to try to, have different groups help fund it, but we could approve the agreement tonight if we all agree that it's necessary. Which it seems to be used by every sport along with, you know, really any sort of activity we have at the school.
That's in those, in that facility, basically.
And including times when, you know, basketball games aren't, you know, canceled and me and my daughter are up there at the school being streamed those.
I heard a lot of people watch that. She asked that.
But the nine thousand nine hundred dollars is paid annually over the course. It's not the twenty-seven or whatever right now?
No, no, it's a year.
So we're probably gonna say yes every year to keep it? Because what's our other option?
The question is, Misha requires it.
It allows, you know, folks that don't wanna be, or maybe they're not feeling well to see their kids or bring kids playing.
Distant viewers.
Distant viewers, people that.
My brother watched it all the time from Lincoln.
Yeah, relatives that live outside of.
We can sell Huddle tickets too. There's a good Huddle we can do that.
Which would mean what? Like what's that?
People who's gonna view it, pay?
Yep, buy a subscription to it. That's what I understand. I don't know how it works, but it's right here on the contract. Other, other tickets.
There are some schools that do that, but it is kinda nice to just say, just, you know, it helps promote what we're doing here at the school and you'll be able to easily see the things that we're doing, especially.
Nice that we offer.
Any motions out there for this? Yes, no?
I make a motion and move forward with the Huddle agreement.
Motion Kelly, for a second?
Second.
For the three years.
Three years.
A second. Um, Paul Vader?
Is this, is this with other organizations helping with this expense or not?
Say it one more time, Craig.
I guess that this was, is this what they bank with all the other organizations helping with this or, meaning football, girls' basketball, boys' basketball, volleyball, baseball, softball?
We can, we can take, uh, that from the board if you guys want us to assess them a fee. Based on their sports, we can do that with participation and come up with a formula on it. If you wanna see that happen and make a motion for us to develop that, we can do it.
Yeah, except.
Well, I'm just, I'm just asking because it's only fair. Am, am I wrong here? It, it, it's okay to disagree. It's, I mean, we're, we're talking about fifteen thousand dollars over three years roughly.
I, I, this motion, I, I think that it would be a separate motion and a separate decision to be made. I think this motion is just to get the software token. You know, just in general. How you pay for it can be a different, I think, probably a different discussion than that.
That comes out of the activities account, right?
They're gonna say, they're, they're fundraisers, they're individual fundraisers, so the kids that are raising funds, they could pay it from there.
No, I mean, right, currently before, before that talk, Huddle had come out of activities account, right?
Yes.
So I think what we can do is this, I think, um, we had a vote. Craig, did you vote? And this just entered into the agreement. I think it was to get your vote of this and John's vote.
You, you got, you got a motion and a second, yes, so it has to come to vote, yes.
Yeah, they, they all raised their hand. I was just gonna check if your hand was raised and I just couldn't see it.
Well, you can't see it, but I'll vote yes.
So that would be a seven-zero, uh, vote. And I think, um, here would be, um, I guess, a chance to talk about how you wanted to fund the five thousand if you, if someone wants to make a motion on how to do that.
Well, I, I mean, I'll entertain the motion. I'm, I'm gonna make a motion that if we're gonna have Huddle, like I alluded to before, you're talking about a select, I shouldn't say a select few, but you're talking about a certain group of individuals, of students that the district pays, that this is available to. And I understand Rich's point. Well, we have music and we have graduation, but let's get real people. The reasons out there is for sports.
I mean, I don't think it's unfair to ask each sport to pay five hundred bucks. I mean.
No, it's, it's not unfair.
Especially when.
We better see what they have in our accounts.
It's not what they have in their account. If, if they're gonna utilize Huddle, then they need to pay for it.
This Huddle agreement, is it, is this like a January through December agreement or an August or the end of July?
It is October.
Oh, August fourteenth.
No.
Contract start date was eight fourteen.
Nine, nine.
Nine twenty-nine, twenty-seven. Yeah.
So I think it would be fair to ask that each head coach, you know, you're looking at basically fifteen grand over three years. But you guys are responsible for X amount of dollars. Because I don't know if the rest of the board looks at student activity accounts, but I sure do. And there's more than enough there to cover the Huddle expense.
It may have to be prorated a little bit because football's only gonna have five home games or whatever versus fifteen basketball or eight volleyball. So it may take a little figuring.
Well, I mean, but I don't think you view it like that.
But like the, I, if I'm right, and I could be wrong, I think like football, they, because we have Huddle, they're able to see every single game in the entire universe and see stats and you can watch every single detailed play. And I assume it works that way with every sport. So it's not just the home game that we all have to watch with this group.
Well, I mean, you're, you're right, Ashley, but you're, you're paying for convenience. It's like anything else. Convenience cost, you know, so students have one of his assistant coaches drive to, let's say Kabul to scout two teams. He can just get on Huddle. Well, he can get on Huddle. And I'm, I'm just pointing out football because we're in a three-year bid and the school's paying for it. And it's kinda, but it's kinda like what Dr. Rob said earlier, you know, you used to exchange tapes and somebody wouldn't scout it. Now it's all digital. It's all about convenience. And I just, I mean, I have a hard time. I, I, I mean, I, I truly believe that football, any sport or extracurricular that's gonna use it should have to help pay for it. It's only fair. And it doesn't matter if you have five games or, or twenty-five games.
But I don't think we should assess the full value against them. Okay, so you use it for graduation.
Well.
Yeah. That's why I.
What's your reasoning?
Well, we, you know, if we assess, say there's five teams that use it, you know, that's five grand a piece each year, or a grand a piece each year. Well, we use it for graduation. Roxanne said.
Music programs.
Music programs.
I mean, junior high games are on there too.
So I mean, I think a lower number and the school, the board, or the, the school covers the rest as, you know, I'm not gonna say patronage, but help for, they're our teams and we take care of them.
And we do.
I'm understanding currently it's okay for X, Y, Z to raise twenty thousand dollars in whatever sales and another, and another organization raised fifteen hundred and we're gonna ask them to pay the same amount?
Well, you just said that earlier, it doesn't matter how many games they have. We do a, a blanket fee. You know, because of the exception of they have more perks than just home or away games. I'm saying if it's gonna cost us five grand a year, if we ask the teams to pay, say, like you said earlier, five hundred dollars and then the school covers.
And the school does make money off of home games.
Yeah, I mean, it's not like it's not benefiting the school any. We get to use it for graduation, for music programs. You know, we all have a kick in some for sure. It shouldn't all come from just the sports teams.
And the, I, that's the other piece.
I think the board needs to sit back and realize what kinda money's being generated off from every, from every, uh, extracurricular. I mean, you guys can sit back and think, huh, I mean, how much you guys donate to?
What do you mean?
I mean, exactly, exactly what I said. I mean, you guys donate to, let's say, the Tipton Cardinal football golf tournament. Do you guys donate to the Tipton Lady Cardinal raffle? Do you guys donate to the Tipton Lady Cardinal softball raffle? I mean, you gotta, you know, you guys gotta realize that the community is nibbled and dined to death.
And that's why we should give something back to the community and let them watch their games and we help support it.
But once again, we're talking about a champagne taste on a beer budget. It's I want, I want, I want, but we don't wanna help fund it.
How long have we used, uh, it's been a while, right? Since COVID?
How do other schools pay for it? You know?
Ten years.
Really, ten years?
But then webcam thing, where people are gonna be from home, I don't think that happened till COVID.
Me, it did because I was coaching cheer at the time and so I know that at that time I was the cheer coach twenty nineteen. It had, we just had it and I know going into the twenty twenty season, we had it then. So I know that they could watch from home then because, um, people would pick, make fun of me cuz I was in the stands.
So and that, that's the piece I don't wanna get lost here. I think there's obviously some benefits to coaches. We talked about like the convenience piece of that, but there's a huge benefit to the community. Yeah, so that, I don't, I just, that part of it, I think, is part of the decision on whether or not we pay for all of this. And you look at the Booster Club, they're coming in and paying for half of that, I assume, part of that is to say that we're, you know, supporting, supporting our athletic teams.
They've paid for half of it the last few years, too.
I mean, I know I go to other huddle cameras from other districts and watch it when the, when teams travel, when our team travels, I appreciate that. So you have those other, you know, other schools that are tapping in to our huddle camera, like, I will tap into Stovers or Cole Camps when we're going there, so I could, so I could watch when our team was traveling, so not, that was very helpful for a person that didn't want to travel, also. So, I mean, I'm not just using ours, I'm using other schools.
I think at this point, what I would say is that there is, we would just, in order to, I don't know, for lack of a better word, assess organization or charge an organization or part of an activity, then we just have to have a motion on that we want to afford doing that. So if someone wants to make that, I guess now would be the time, unless we have more discussion.
I mean, I really don't even think you need a motion to divvy it out.
We haven't done it. If you want us to develop a formula and have you guys look at it and approve it one way or the other, we can do that. And I'll work with the ADEs and.
Would be nice to have them here, so we can visit with them too, about their use.
I don't think, I mean, I'm just tired of, I mean, I get sick and tired of being sick and tired, kind of like Nelson, don't get me wrong, but, I mean, you can't, it's that old champagne taste on a beer budget. Everybody acts like the school's got all this money, but, I mean, you got to watch what you're doing. And fifteen grand over three years doesn't sound like much. You know? Fifteen grand, I'm sure there's certain people on the board, I'm sure you can think of a hundred different ways to spend fifteen grand over three years, besides huddle. Am I right or wrong?
I mean, I think we have, we do have a lot, I mean, we do have needs everywhere. It just, every, all the needs, I think you just value and try to figure out if they're worth the money, I think. I, I like having huddle, I think it's a benefit for not only the community, but for the coaches.
Well, I'm not, I'm not, and I don't like it, no, but what I'm saying is, we're into, we're into business for education. Correct? I mean, you agree?
Yep.
We're, we're, we're not into business for a YouTube channel to show Tipton girls' basketball or, or Tipton football. Again, it's convenience.
I mean, on that same concept, then, are we going to charge each team to use the multi-purpose building if it passes? I mean, it's.
I mean, I mean, just like this, Derek, it's that old saying, if, if it's a buzzer candy, it knows it'd be Christmas all year round.
I'm just saying, it's, it's an important tool for each team, and it is for the teams, plus it's also for the community, you know? I, I'm just going to use first guy coming across my head, if Jack Knips is at home sick, he can sit and watch the football game, you know?
And I'm, I'm not disagreeing with you. It is, it's, it's a convenient way to watch a ballgame, right?
Yes, correct. And now that I know about it, I won't be watching the late ballgames if I can't make them, I think it's a great idea, and I just don't think the full cost should go on each team, I think it, you know, like we said, a cost, and then the school covers the rest, I mean, we're already getting lucky enough that Booster Club's cutting it in half. I don't think we should push it on the teams for the full amount, I need a reduced amount and call it good, and it's the cost of doing business.
Well, I'll probably disagree on that, but.
Fair enough.
I mean, that, that's your opinion versus mine, but.
Well, maybe one way forward would be for, I don't know, Dr. Rob, do you want to discuss with the ADE coaches, just this discussion, just in general, to get their thoughts, and maybe we can put it as a topic for the next board meeting?
We can do that.
No, I'd like to see them here.
Yeah.
Way from that car hall. I did it for breakfast. And I saw him in the circle ride this morning.
Well, he's not, he's not trying to be absent, he's coaching.
Well, I mean, I mean, Dave, Dave's got a valid point here, just not to stick this so long in the board, it's even in his face. So, I mean, I'm not trying to be a butt here, but he's, he's got a valid point.
He'll be here.
So this would go into old business, new business, really? And it'd be good to have some of those folks here, we kind of, they can talk about that piece of it, or I guess, we'll want to make a decision there on how to divvy up some of the costs if we can, we've already approved the agreement, so that's done, so. If there's no discussion, any further discussion on that, we'll kind of move into the tax rate levy, everyone heard what Matt had to say. We've got a recommendation in front of us, I think, that everyone can see. Certainly can discuss that recommendation if you want, if not, we can make a motion for.
I think, like it says here, we, we need to keep as much money coming in, I mean, we don't need to reduce anything, so I would make a motion that we approve a total tax levy at four point oh five oh five with two point nine six seven one placed in the operating levy and one point oh eight three four placed in the debt service for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year.
We have a motion, can we have a second?
Second.
We have a second from Kelly, Paula Baker. Craig, are you voting yes for that, or no?
Uh, well, you can't see my hand, but yes, I'm voting yes.
That was the joke earlier, yeah, so, I mean, that's a seven, although I don't believe we have any sort of executive session tonight, if that's still true?
That's true.
So we would just need.
Pick it up one way or the other, if you want it.
We would just need a motion to adjourn.
I'm going to motion adjourn.
Hang on, hang on, hang on. What, what was the catastrophe Tuesday on the bus getting all the children on?
I can talk to you about that after.
Okay, uh, this, that's. Either it's got to be put on next month.
And it involves some students too, because we don't do that in public.
Right, so if it, if it's students or faculty, it's got to be in closed session, it's not on the agenda, it's got to be next meeting. If you got concern, or like some of you guys fired off a text chain, like, if you guys got questions, either call me or call Terry, Dr. Rob, we'll, we'll try to answer. But we can't, it's got to be on the agenda, or if it's, or if it's students or faculty, it's got to be in closed session.
All right, so we did have a motion by somebody, can you remove Amanda and then the second, I can't leave.
Sorry, Amanda.
And you had your hand raised, so I think that means we are adjourned, is that correct?
Can you pick out?